All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for January 21st, 2016 to order. Could I have a roll call of the members, please?
Dirk Bowden. Ellen Buckner.
Resident.
Emery Dorsey.
Resident.
Donna Kimzy. Scott Ohm.
Here.
Steve Timms.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Thank you. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the order of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I do move to approve the order of the agenda with one addition. This City Wheat Ridge Planning Commission Resolution Number One Series of 2016, Designating Public Place for the Posting of Meeting Notices Required by Colorado Open Meetings Law. Just another number eight other items.
Very well. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for December 3rd, 2015.
I move to approve the minutes for December 3rd, 2015.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Let's vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Wonderful. All right, next up on the agenda is the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Any of you here want to say anything about something not part of the hearing, feel free to. Okay, great. All right, we'll proceed to the public hearing. This is, we have one case tonight. Case number WZ-15-12. This is an application filed by Equinox Properties for approval of a zone change from residential one, that's R1, to mixed-use commercial, that's MUC, for a property located at 3865 Kipling Streets. Hi, Meredith.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Okay, case number WZ-15-09 is a request for approval of a zone change from R1 to mixed-use commercial at 3865 Kipling Street. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials and the contents of this digital presentation.
So entered.
Let's see, all notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So again, this is an application for approval of a zone change from R1 to mixed-use commercial. The zone change is the first step in the process for approval of development of the property under mixed-use zoning. And if approved and prior to any construction, a site plan and plat would be required. Those are typically administrative reviews without public hearings. And the purpose of the rezoning is to modify the list of permitted uses on the property and to simplify the review and approval for future development. So, this is a 2014 aerial taken of the property. North is to the top. West 38th Avenue runs here along the bottom with Kipling Street over towards the east. The property is outlined in sort of a turquoise. And you can see that it's at the northeast corner of 38th and Kipling. It is irregularly shaped, is about 2.2 acres in size. And it's got a couple of vacant buildings on the northern portion of it, presumably as farm buildings, single-family residence and so on. It does not include the piece at the hard corner of 38th and Kipling. This piece is under separate ownership and currently has a gas station on it. So, you're probably aware that the R1 Zone District is our largest single-family zone, residential zone. And it only allows single-family and a list of other types of civic uses such as churches and schools and so on. This is also a 2014 aerial, this time with a zoning overlay. Again, the property is outlined in turquoise. 38th Avenue runs along the south side. And then we've got Kipling further to the east. There are a variety of land uses and zonings that are in this area, as you can tell from the, all the different colors on the zoning map. Each one of those colors represents a different zoning. To the west is properties that zone planned commercial development and it is used as a dental office. That was built, I want to say, in the mid 2000s. To the south, the red color stands for commercial one. And that is what we are calling now the Kipling Ridge Development. This is an old photo and since then the site has been redeveloped. It's got a new Starbucks, a Sprouts grocery store and also the Morning Star assisted living facility. On the other side of Kipling on the east, we've got more C1 zoning with a gas station, some auto repair and also sort of a retail strip mall. And then to the north, up in this area, we've got both R1 and C1 zoning and it encompasses the City of Wheat Ridge Rec Center. And I would note that separating the Rec Center from the subject site is 39th, I thought it was 39th Place, which is the access drive into the center and then Lena Gulch, which is one of our major drainage ways in the city. So, taking a look at some photos of the site. This is looking north from 38th Avenue at the frontage of the property. Over here on the very left-hand side is the dental office. And then on the right side in the image is the gas station on the corner. This is a better view of the dental office. This is looking east towards the, I guess it's a Shell station. And this is looking east on 38th Avenue. The Kipling Ridge Center is located on the right-hand side and you can see the streetscape and public improvements that were put in place with that. Now I'm standing on Kipling looking east, excuse me, west. Couple of these outbuildings you can see over on the left-hand side of the image. Looking northwest, you can see the green burn roof to the Rec Center. And then looking north along Kipling and the property is to the left-hand side in that image. So, let's see, moving on. So again, the applicant is requesting the property rezoned to mixed-use commercial. This is a zone district that we generally see along major commercial corridors and at community centers and employment activity centers. And the intent behind the mixed-use zoning is to encourage medium-to-high-density mixed-use development. And in addition to retail, excuse me, residential and civic uses that are currently allowed on the property, those uses are allowed in the MUC zoning as well in addition to a wide range of commercial and retail uses. And again, the purpose of the mixed-use zoning is to create a flexible approach to land use. It's looking really more at design rather than use and compatibility with adjacent structures. It's intended to promote a mix of land uses, be more urban in character and more pedestrian-friendly. Our mixed-use zoning has been very popular because it's actually a more predictable land use process for an applicant rather than going through a big, long plan development process. So, and this particular application does not have a specific development scenario at this time. So as I indicated previously, the, really the zoning on the property, R1, is very limited. The only thing that it allows are single-family residential uses as well as public uses. And I put together a little chart that showed what's allowed under R1, what's allowed under the MUC zoning as far as uses goes. Not only are residential and commercial uses allowed, there are, you know, a full range of office service, retail and restaurant. There is some availability to drive-through uses if they can meet certain criteria. Under the R1 zoning, there are no architectural standards. And in the mixed-use zoning, we have written in development standards into the actual zone district itself related to articulation, variation, materials and transparencies. Maximum building height in the R1 is 35 feet. And in this particular zone district, it was not part of the area that was excluded from density and height standards. And so in this particular, on this particular property, any use or any building that would have a residential use within it would be 35 feet and any commercial structure would be 50 feet and so on. So if the rezoning is approved, the applicant would then submit for an administrative review and a subdivision application. Both of those would be administrative and the design of the property would be held to the standards, not only in the mixed-use zoning but also in the architectural and site design manual. As far as process goes, there was a neighborhood meeting on December 15th. There was one attendee present and the gentleman that was there was supportive of the rezoning and reinvestment. We went out on our standard 15-day referral to all of the service agencies with no concerns expressed from city departments or other agencies. Once we get a site plan application in, we would be going through an additional referral process for both the site plan and the subdivision. Assuming we're moving forward with this application, the next step would be a city council public hearing on March 14th and then a special development, or a specific development plan, possibly a plat and then to building permit. So, as the commission is aware, we have criteria detailed and included in the zoning and development code that we use for evaluating a zone change request. The criteria relate to things like impacts on the area, whether utilities conservative and so forth. I think the two most important in my mind are probably consistency with the comprehensive plan and a change in the character of the area. In Vision Wheat Ridge, which this is a little screenshot that I took of the area from the structure map in the comprehensive plan, identifies Kipling as a primary commercial corridor and is high on the city's list of redevelopment priorities. And while we've got a recreation focus a little bit further to the north where we've got the Rec Center and, you know, some of the trails along Clear Creek and Lena Gulch, the southern portion closer to the intersection is appropriate for higher intensity uses, taller buildings and higher densities. The community commercial center designation, which is the round circle, is an area of focus with the goal of ensuring these areas remain economically strong and serve community needs related to the city's fiscal health and social well-being. And additional goals met in the comprehensive plan include redevelopment of and reinvestment of underutilized commercial areas with long-term infill with denser, high-quality development. With regard to the change in character of the area, Kipling is a state highway. It's designated as primary commercial corridor in the comp plan. And it carries over 41,000 vehicles per day, which makes it probably pretty undesirable for low-density residential use. We are continuing to see development on the Kipling Corridor intensifies with new development and reinvestment in tired old commercial centers like the Kipling Ridge Development right to the south. This area is undergoing change and we believe that this rezoning will provide additional options for it to be redeveloped as it moves forward. And it could act as a catalyst for additional redevelopment and reinvestment in the area. So with that, staff has concluded the following. We've concluded that the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety and welfare. We've concluded that the request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and that the zone change will prepare it for the property for redevelopment and may be a catalyst for other improvements or investments in the area. And finally, the criteria used to evaluate a zone change support the request. We are giving a recommendation of approval with no conditions. And that concludes staff comments.
Great, thanks Meredith. All right, any commission questions for staff? Let's start over here with Scott.
Thank you for that presentation. I just have two questions. Is any portion of the property in the floodplain?
It is not. Lena Gulch, as is adjacent to the property, was channelized as part of the improvements we did back in the late 80s, early 90s.
And then the other one is just kind of more curiosity. There's a funny little jog on the north side. Was that at some point like envisioned as a road or something to continue 39th?
It was, when we originally were plating the Rec Center, at one point we had thought that it would be a potential for access point, which really doesn't make a whole lot of sense anymore. The Rec Center is so heavily used that we have concluded that it probably isn't appropriate or very functional to co-mingle commercial traffic with the Rec Center traffic.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Okay, Mr. Timms.
Just one question for staff. In the staff report in your presentation, you referenced that the applicant doesn't have any scenarios at this time. In the neighborhood meeting notes from December 15th, there are actually two proposals or two scenarios in that?
So, I think, I wasn't at the meeting, but I think when Zach prepared the notes, when, we typically go from a pre-application meeting with an applicant to a neighborhood meeting. I think he pulled a lot of that from the original pre-application notes. And so, we looked at a couple of options with them sort of back in the day. I don't know if either of those are moving forward. And we're just looking at the zone change as a freestanding action itself.
I'll follow up with them. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Kimzy.
I don't have any questions.
All right, Mr. Dorsey.
No questions here.
Ms. Weaver.
I don't know, I don't know if this is appropriate at this meeting, but what's the regulation on? Is there, there is a sidewalk there, yes, but it's adjacent to the street on the west side of Kipling?
Of Kipling, yes. And so...
So when, when and if it's redeveloped, will they have to do a setback?
Yes. Well, they will have to be, they will be responsible for building sidewalks on both, separated sidewalks with a tree lawn, both along 38th Avenue and the Kipling frontage.
Okay, can I, can I ask a further question regarding that? Would this be a situation since the rest of 38th and Kipling does not do that, would they potentially be able to do the give money and not do it on their property but give money towards having it done? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're, what you're talking about is providing an escrow for future development?
My just, my concern generally is that there is so much pedestrian traffic on both these streets and there just is not adequate pedestrian access, which is not an issue of this. I just kind of, with thinking about Envision Wheat Ridge and all of the other things, what's the plan for really making it pedestrian-friendly?
Right. Well, generally, the policy on especially corridors that are so heavily traveled would be to get the improvements built and then hopefully fill in the links as we go along.
Okay.
You're probably aware that we just are in the process of completing the path along the east side of Kipling, which is 10 feet wide with a tree lawn.
Right.
Probably wouldn't be as wide on this side, but definitely trying to accommodate the pedestrians.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, an effort would be made to continue that whole thing from, cool.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowden.
My questions involve the scenarios outlined at the neighborhood meeting, so maybe I'll have the applicants come justify or talk about that before I ask something that doesn't exist.
Right, and I know you already had brought that up to me, why don't we should have the packet? Because, like I say, this is, the intent of the zoning is that there is not any specific development scenarios. We tossed around a couple ideas of what might work on the property. Also, I think included in that was some discussion of trying to include the gas station, but, you know, that's probably a little bit pie in the sky.
No questions then.
All right, I just had a couple of questions, Meredith.
Sure.
When we talk about the uses on MUC zoning, with conditional use for drive-throughs if mandatory separation from adjacent drive-throughs can be met, I'm kind of curious, what are, do you know offhand or remember offhand what that mandatory separation requirement is?
500 feet.
500 feet, okay.
The Starbucks is definitely within that 500-foot separation. There's not really a variance that can be applied for.
Yeah.
They can, if they do a true mix of uses, say a residential component and a commercial component, then they don't have to meet that separation?
So, like a, like a drive-through bank kiosk would be allowed if there was, say, second-story residential above a commercial, something?
Some sort of scenario like that.
Okay. I was just curious too, you know, thinking about the gas station here. Do gas stations with self-serve kiosks count as a drive-through as far as the code?
Yes.
Okay. Would that also apply to automatic car washes?
Yes.
Okay, so anything basically where a car can pull in, get a service and pull out counts as drive-through? Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. The other question, the other just point of clarification I wanted to make is that zoning map you had in Exhibit Three. There's a little, little tiny chunk of R1 zoning on, in that southwest corner that kind of steps out from the rest of it. No, actually way over to the right, or left, yeah. I believe, didn't we address that in a case recently?
We did. Yeah, so this is, has not been updated, but this piece of property right here is currently a single-family home. It was rezoned from R1 to MUN, geez, about six months ago. And then this is a little duplex property zoned R2. We were hoping those would be combined, but it, that did not happen.
So I guess a follow-on question to that would be if we, if we approved an MUN zone change for that little parcel, why the differentiation between that and the MUC request here?
Closer to Kipling.
Closer to Kipling, okay. So it's not a size, is it a size aspect to it? Or is it just the proximity to Kipling?
It's the proximity to the intersection.
Okay, all right, great. Does anyone else have any follow-on questions to Scott? Yes?
Yeah, on that same map, just out of curiosity. So what happens if that, if this gets rezoned to mixed-use commercial on 38th and Kipling? There's going to be a, from the subject property to the center line of the road, that's going to be residential one?
No, typically the zone district goes to the center line of the site.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other follow-on questions for Meredith? Okay, great, well, thanks a lot. So, now what we usually do is if the applicant would like to come and add anything to that or make any clarifications or say anything, you're welcome to come up, just state your name and your address for us, make a statement and then if we could have the opportunity to ask some questions, that would be great.
Hello, good evening. My name's Erica Shorter and I'm representing...
Can you, can you bring the mic up just for the folks at home? Thanks.
I'm Erica Shorter and I'm representing Equinox Properties. My address is 1873 South Belair Street, Denver, Colorado. And, you know, Equinox just purchased this property in October. And so the reason I wanted to just clarify, I also work for Evergreen Development, which is also a retail development company. And we were under contract for a long period of time and working with the user and had gone through several site plan iterations. And the user went away and we had an investor come and purchase the property. And so we've kind of just decided to step back and start over and thought the best plan of attack would be to rezon to the MUC and then, and then start really working with users and talking with different prospective users. So, that's kind of the confusion with the notes. I think some were copied from the first pre-op meeting that we had a while ago. So, that's the confusion there. So, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Okay, Mr. Bowden, do you have questions for the applicant?
So there haven't been any kind of negotiations with the Shell or talks about?
Yeah, we've talked with them. We've had some initial conversations with them, but we have not come to an agreement on any terms. So, it could be one direction that we head in the future, but at this point, we don't have anything solidified with them.
Amanda, questions? Mr. Dorsey. Donna, Steve?
So with no scenario in place, does that also mean then that no access permit from CDOT is then technically applicable as of today?
Well, when we, when we were under contract with Evergreen before Equinox purchased the property, we did submit an application with CDOT. We did get an access permit for a ride-in, ride-out of Kipling, so we do still have that.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, nothing? Okay. I don't think I've got any questions for you there, so thanks for clarifying that stuff. All right, now's the time for anyone else who would like to ask questions of the commission that we can then address to the applicant or staff. Has there been anything? Okay, either of you guys, okay. All right, well, I'll close this part of the public hearing then and we'll discuss, entertain motions and whatnot.
I'd like to make a motion, move to recommend approval of case number WZ-15-12. A request for approval of a zone change from residential one, R1, to mixed-use commercial for property located at 3865 Kipling Street for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety and welfare of the community. Number two, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. Number three, the zone change will prepare the property for redevelopment and may serve as a catalyst for other property development or improvements in the area. Number four, the criteria used to evaluate a zone change support the request.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion, commissioners? All right, I'll ask for a vote then, please.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thanks very much. Thanks for coming down. Meredith, thanks for your work on that too. All right. Now we'll move on to our other item. This is City of Wheat Ridge Resolution, or Planning Commission Resolution Number One for 2016. This is a resolution establishing a designated... Uh, this is a resolution establishing a designated public place for the posting of meeting notices as required by the Colorado Open Meetings Law. Meredith, do you want to talk about this, or should I just go through it?
There's not much to add. Um, this is a statutory requirement that we do this once a year, and, um, it's pretty typical that we, um, uh, use the lobby, the lobby, um, posting area, and, um, you know, we, we do that for Housing Authority Planning Commission Board of Adjustments, so we would just need a motion from you. In addition to the public posting, we also... The problem with that is that a lot of people don't have access to the cabinet, so that's why we use the lobby as our official place.
Okay, is there any, any change on this, uh, resolution compared to last year's resolution?
I don't believe there is.
It, it seems extremely similar to me, but, okay. All right, uh, yeah, I think you kind of covered everything here. Commissioners, any discussion on this? Comments about? Okay.
I support it.
You support it, all right, I support it too. Okay. Open meetings are good meetings, that's my motto. All right, well, then I'll ask for a, a motion to approve this resolution then.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number One, Series of 2016, a resolution establishing a designated public place for the posting of meeting notices as required by the Colorado Open Meetings Law.
I would second that.
All right, unless there's any further discussion, I'll ask for a vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, great. So, for anyone at home who missed that, you can find our, uh, posted, postings of meetings here in City Hall in the Wheat Ridge Transcript or online on the city website. Uh, we'll do that for a whole nother year, and then we'll do this resolution again. I imagine it'll be very similar. Uh, okay, uh, any other business?
Just briefly, we've got three of you who, oops, whose terms are coming, um, to the end, that would be Alan, uh, Scott, and Emery. Um, they expire on March 2nd, 2016, so if you feel like this has been a great learning experience for you and you'd like to continue to serve the City of Wheat Ridge on the Planning Commission, you will need to reapply through the city clerk's office. Um, once we, uh, do that, and hopefully, you know, we still have one opening from District Four, um, the second meeting in March will vote for a new chairman and vice chair. So a couple of things to keep in mind there.
A new chair already?
I know.
Man, I feel like... Gee, well, that's, that's okay.
You got a notice.
Yeah. Yeah, or just, you know, take it up to the city clerk, she'll take it.
So, any questions or comments on that? And then the final thing, this, you see that we are, um, trying to promote, uh, sustainability? We've moved to a new packet system, so appreciate everybody's cooperation in that. Uh, we think it makes sense, and, uh, I think last Friday, was it last Friday, the packet Scott delivered in a snowstorm, maybe that was two weeks, two weeks ago, and so these will be a little bit more, uh, durable as well, so. Oh, good.
Sometimes, uh, I don't know if you're vanilla envelope, you have to go out and have your special order for some of them because they really get thick.
I just, I just, I'd like to make one request, and that's, uh, that you add a handcuff to a lock on there so I carry it, so I look like a real official courier, you know, I look like a real dangerous guy.
Alan, that just makes you look like a spy.
I know, that's exactly what I have, that's what this look I'm going for. All right, uh, great, yeah, I, I like that, that stuff too, it's, it's a, it's a nice sustainable addition to the, uh, process, so. All right, well, unless there's anything else, uh, we can adjourn if somebody wants to move that.
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that, let's go.
All right, let's vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thanks, everybody.